Good afternoon, everyone, or good evening. And welcome to our special meeting in the City Council of the City of Huracan, July 20. The time is 6:30 at Huracan City Hall, 250 Ash Street. May I have a roll call for this?
Mary Moore.
Present.
Brenda Hernandez.
Present.
Richard Rada.
Here.
Sonia Hernandez.
Here.
Brenda Trevino.
Here.
Robert Triller.
Here.
Roland Segovia.
Here.
Devina O'Driscoll.
Have a form, so let us stand for our invocation, as well as our speech of allegiance. Mr. Frasco, if you can lead us in prayer, please.
Heavenly Father, we thank you, Lord God, with the prayer of community, Council comes together, Lord, for taking care of business for the city, for the community, for the people. We ask in the name of Jesus, Father, who has blessed himself in this meeting, in this meeting that he will give wisdom, guidance, knowledge, understanding, Lord God, that the decisions that are about to be made, Lord God, are your will and according to them for your honor and glory. Father, this we ask that through these decisions, the city may be blessed, and the city may continue to prosper. In Jesus' name we pray.
Amen. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the Father, and to the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we move it on to new business, budget workshop. Budget workshop for 2019, 2020.
May I, for the record, please, we just, Council?
This week year. Yeah, for the record, 6:30, once you walk in. All righty. Entertainer motion to go into the budget workshop, please. Motion, second. Second, in favor. Yes, sir, you may proceed. Thank you.
Mary, Council, good evening. We've been working still as staff to try to get you a balanced budget. As you can see in your packets, we've balanced the budget this year. We want to share some highlights of good and the bad as far as the budget. So I'll move forward. Excuse some of my, trying to get this presentation for you, so I know the citizens are above the City Council, so I didn't, I knew that, so just make sure that we'll go through this presentation, I understand that. So again, it was a mistake on my end as far as this presentation. But again, Council knows, these are your appointed positions, the City Attorney, Municipal Court Judge, and the City Manager. Can you flip that screen? On the organizational chart, and I wish I could make this a little bigger, but here's the way that's far as what I'm proposing as the new structure. And I broke it down, again, going from the particular divisions or departments to back to divisions, and why I call it smaller pieces of different departments. And so in essence, what you have is a City Manager oversees four, I'd say four departments, and then I'll be working, again, with planning and community development and the library. There's total of, that's why they're optioned aside there, there's a total of five staff, six including me, that I'll be working with. I am asking, again, to keep at least two people to help me out with the planning and community development part of this, and I'll go in deeper into this as we move forward. Again, the one position we're proposing cutting is the Library Director position, and I think that was discussed at the last meeting, and that's why you have a total of three positions for the library. For Police Department, and I wanted to, again, illustrate some of the important significance of this, Police Department has a staff of 20 people. Twenty people, including the two that we're proposing for the code enforcement slash, code enforcement slash animal control. So with that, I believe, if you keep correct, am I wrong, I believe they have 16 police officers, including the chief, and he has two admins. So that's a total of 20 people. The two admins, the 16 officers, and two code enforcement slash animal control, brings him up to 20 people. In finance, there's a total of seven positions. And we are proposing, we'd like to, for the Council to consider, allowing us to have utility, another utility building person, because what's happening, I think, right now, they're shifting that work and that workload, and so we're having to rotate that. There's two reasons for that, that we'd like to have a utility building clerk. There's gonna have to be, I've tried to do as best planning as I could, because I know this building that was coming on, it's gonna be across the street here, probably will come on, I would assume, probably March or April, maybe May of this year, as far as, you know, an opening for the building. So we're gonna have to make some plans to move people down there, one, and have somebody greet people now, whether that includes somebody here from the City, from the City Hall, or in working with Municipal Court Judge, we still have to coordinate that. So again, I'm trying to plan as early as possible for that, but I do have that in mind as far as, as far as the people that are gonna be over there, and then somebody to welcome and greet people as they come into the building. So I just wanted to make sure the Council was aware of that. Public Works Department, that includes the Parks and Recreation, doing with the new structure, that's a total of 38 people. Thirty-eight people, and again, I'll go over this in a minute, that's pretty significant number, that's the biggest department that the city has as far as, as far as workforce. And again, we're proposing the five new hires for streets. The roadway crew, again, will now be under the Street Department, and three that they have, I believe, I think it's 12 or 13 people, I thought we had 13, but again, we have at least 12 people that are gonna be working to street work. So I just wanted to make sure the Council was aware that that number includes what we're proposing for streets, as far as staff. City records, the lonely one person there is, that's as many people as we have budgeted for that department. So all in all, again, you have four departments that'll be reporting directly to the City Manager. Can you go back to the next one? The Police Department, again, this is the breakdown of the Police Department. If you go back, you have a chief police, you have two admins, 15 field operations, and two that are code enforcement slash animal control. So that's how that breakdown goes. And I wanted, again, I put this on to be as clear as possible as far as how the breakup personnel goes. So if there's any questions, feel free to, feel free to ask. You can go down to the next slide. The Finance Department, again, you have one person, we, I'm asking to keep that position available, utility building person, again, there's going to be three people there, there's two that'll be there in the front, and you have one that's, she does a lot of work in the background, so she's in that office there, and so, so we're asking to keep that position as well. Payroll, you have one person that counts payroll, and that's, those positions currently exist. So again, the total, including the Finance Director, there's a total of seven positions. Under Public Works, this is the breakdown, you have administrative assistants, and you have also a service center, that's your mechanic there. So the mechanic there and the service center make up two, two positions. Again, the one position that we are, that I am asking for is the Public Works Director. And that person really, hopefully, we can get a really good qualified person to jump in that role, because it's gonna be, it really is a critical, critical position, and I know the Council knows that. The Water has always had six positions, the sewer and wastewater treatment plant has four. And I'll add this to, I was out there yesterday with the wastewater and those folks, and they, I know the Council, and probably also know this, but they do a heck of a job. Those guys, I mean, I was really impressed with them. I was out there yesterday, and they really are doing a great job for the city. I can say that I feel really comfortable in the work that they're doing, and I know that they have a lot of work and a lot of improvements. They had me there and told me all the improvements that need to be made, but they are doing a good job out there, and it's just a position that goes unrecognized, I think, a lot of times. Same can be said for some, a lot of other positions, but those guys do a really, really good job for a critical service that the city needs. Streets and roadway, and the transfer station, and that's before my 13th person came in, I'm sorry, that's what it was, the transfer station, there's 13 positions. We can get into the transfer discussion, transfer station discussion as well during this meeting, but total, there's a total of 13 positions we're proposing for the streets and roadway. That's the biggest number as far as streets and roadways that, I'll kind of show the histories to where I'm going with this, that that division has had in several years. Gas Department, six positions, Parks and Recreation, the transfer station, six positions. And the reason I put this on there, again, the transfer station, there's been some discussions to, one, the operating hours, and two is, you know, the charges and what we're charging people out of the transfer station. So during this, throughout this budget, those are some of the things that we tried to address, is trying to figure out what works for the citizens, one, and then, two, how can we, how can we motivate, and I guess incentivize citizens to come and dump out there if they have, you know, trash or whatever. The goal to me is to try to get them to utilize whatever is in the transfer stations as best they can. So can you go to the next one? So again, the summary, the total of staff, so that means you have the new three, the City Manager goes office, again, I'm talking planning and community development, the Police has 20, Public Works has 38, Finance has seven, City Park is one, and the Library has two. That goes up, that's a total of 78 people that fall under the City Manager's burden. Budget highlights, we've gone over some of this, but I do want to make sure that we did add some things, I did, I did increase some things, and Josie helped out with this as well, so I appreciate the work she's done, too. Cost of living increased, we're proposing that to stay in the budget. Increase the number of personnel to streets. Overall budget for streets increased by $200,000 compared to last fiscal year. Now, last fiscal year, if you compare it to 2017, 18, it went up significantly, last, from 2017 to 2018, it went up significantly. We're going up an additional $200,000. My concern, and I'll share this with the Council now, is hopefully we can find the number of staff that we need, and I'm talking for, when we put, if the Council allows us to move forward, to find good candidates to help us with the streets. That's my biggest concern, is just finding the people to actually help with the work. That, and making sure we have the equipment and stuff that they need. And again, you'll see more, that's what we're proposing. I've talked to the street crew, and I've asked them, what is it that you need? Of course, the one thing they tell me is manpower, the other thing they tell me is equipment. So in doing that, again, looking down there, you can see that the streets and roadway maintenance, it's increased 10 times the budgeted amount as compared to 2017 and 18. Five new positions being added. This new division will be responsible for the maintenance of city streets and roadways. That's gonna be their primary purpose, and I'll share some of the other things that we could get them to help us with, but that's gonna be their primary purpose as far as, as far as what they're gonna be required to do, as far as that division, okay? Police Department, increased that budget, a lot of that was due into the two animal control slash code enforcement officers, so they increased, that budget increased by about $150,000. We also included $40,000 for demolition of dilapidated structures. And I've talked some to the Police Chief about this, and the Municipal Court Judge, actually, I just talked to the judge today, but we're gonna, we're gonna make an effort to try to demolish some dilapidated structures, and what I mean by that is, there's buildings that I know of, and we're talking just residential structures, and I believe Mr. Sayroy actually took me to one, that is completely burned down, been burned down for years. I believe we can, we can do some of the work with our crews, and I, this is why I bring in some of the street crews, to help us maybe pick out a couple weeks or months for them, for us to knock down some of these structures. It does require us, it will require us to probably rent a piece of equipment. You can knock these buildings down with an excavator or a backhoe, you could do that, but chances are, we probably need an excavator to move forward and knock some of the buildings down. So I, we're gonna, the goal is for us to identify at least, I'd say, four to eight buildings for this year, and see if we can move forward with knocking those down. It's not gonna be an immediate thing, because we still have to go through hearings, we still have to let the owners know, we still have to go through a series of things that we have to do before we could just knock a building down. But that's kind of the goal, is try to clean up the town and areas that, parks and houses that we know that have been there, and again, I don't know this, so I'm gonna ask the help of the staff and the Council of houses that we've seen that have been dilapidated for several years. We could, I'm sure there's a, I think the list has been created, but we do need, we may need to revise our ordinance, our dilapidated structure ordinance, and I know that there's some statutes, state statutes, that have changed this, the requirements, but nonetheless, I think it can be done with the staff that we have, with the understanding that we will come to the year and rent some equipment to get this done. So we've asked for $40,000 for equipment to be rented, to demolish some of these structures. And this will be a planned effort, it's not, again, we're not gonna just jump into it and start knocking houses down, we know we have to go through a process. The other thing we added is, we took out of the budget, the fees will be waived at the transfer station, and we are, we're gonna start working to see what hours of operation we really need out there, particularly Saturdays, Saturdays are open tend to, too. And so my, I guess our analysis is gonna be, do we really wanna be open, one, on Saturdays, and if we do, what time, and the same thing goes for money to varieties, is trying to figure out what, what hours it works best for the citizens, so we don't have somebody just out there. I've heard a couple of things as well, that it costs money to go out there, one, two is, is the station is not open, or it's, it's open and nobody shows up out there. This is what I hear from staff, it's open, there's nobody out there. So it's like, well, nobody comes and dumps stuff. So that's gonna be the, something we're gonna have to look at, as far as staff, making sure we're documenting the people that are going to dump, what time they're documenting, what time they're dumping. So those are the things we're gonna have to look at, that we haven't looked at, to my knowledge, in the past couple of years. One of some of the things that are not in the budget, but will be in the budget for, as far as a budget amount for the next fiscal year, we're proposing the purchase of three police pursuit vehicles, 10 trucks and one maintainer. That's what we're proposing this year. The trucks that we've identified, and I spoke to the public, the interim Public Works Director, those are trucks that have been in the fleet for over 10 years. Some of these trucks, as y'all may know and see, they're in pretty bad shape. We're not asking to replace anything new, anything that's, you know, five, six, seven years old, we're asking to replace equipment that we've had for at least 10 years, again, on the trucks. Those trucks will be going out to the different departments, again, hopefully to help them out with their operations, and again, to show a better image, to be quite frank, is another reason we're doing this. The 10 trucks, the two, the police pursuit vehicles, I think, those are running around $56,000 each. This year, if we, we'll come back to the Council, but we want to propose buying three, the pickup trucks that are police pursuit trucks, I think they run, again, about $56,000. And the maintainer is one of the things that the Street Department has asked for, and they should, in my opinion, to do some of this work they need. That's the, the maintainer is running about $150, $190,000 each, so it's an expensive piece of equipment. And so that, those are the items that we're proposing as far as equipment. The estimated cost for all this equipment is about $650,000. The lease payments on those will begin next year, 2021, the amount we're estimating is about $140,000 for all of this. And one of the things that we have, again, is proposed, we're not, we're not requiring a transfer from the utility fund. So if you look at your budgets, you compare it to previous years, previous years, I believe, there's been a transfer every year from the utility fund. We're not proposing that this year. I think that was, in my opinion, is a good thing, not to say that we're not gonna have any amendments, I hope as we can stick to this budget and be as frugal as possible with the budget. But there are no transfers. So that's one of the positives, I think, out of this, I think last year there was a transfer of $180,000 that was proposed in the budget, if I'm wrong, there just, this year there are no transfers from the utility fund. So, anyway. Anything else? In turn, are you praying? Again, the four full-time positions that we, that we proposed last time, and one part-time position, so people are still proposing cuts on those. The other things we added, summer recreation, teen night, Main Street program. The program itself, and again, I want to touch on this, the programming, you'll see it in your budget, the majority of the program was eliminated, and what I did keep on there was a salary. Again, my hope is, is to utilize that person, if the Council says, you know, we don't wanna do the Main Street, I still would like to have a position, to be able to fill some of the voids that we're gonna, that we're gonna need to fill, of some of these positions we've eliminated. I really, on my end, it's really, it would be really hard to cut any more office staff. I just, it would be really tough, from an operations standpoint, to say, yeah, let's cut additional office staff, simply because, you know, I need them. And if we can't, then I believe that it'll affect the operations. And again, I haven't been here long enough to determine that, I can't say I'm 100% sure of that, but I can't say that the cuts that we've made now, in my opinion, the majority is the Council sees are all office positions. We're not proposing any cuts out for any of the folks that are out there doing, you know, the legwork, the glue collar work, as I say. So again, that's my, that's the recommendation that we have. The last, the last clip I want to show, please, this is a bit tough to see. Do you have, do you have the bigger, this is your capper? This is, this is your capper information? This should be the last sheet here? This is your, that's your, this, this, you have it? This is historical, this is a historical analysis of what's provided to the audit, and this is part of your 2016, 17 capping. And if you look at it, it provides a function, the positions, the number of positions for each department, each division, and it specifies, I think, if I'm looking at this correctly, which I know I am, 2009, you had a total of about 59 positions, okay? Now, we can do the analysis on that, but that's how it broke down. At the time, in 2009, you had almost 14 positions in police. That's what was the brunt of, of the number of positions. You could see where all that broke down, the pinnacle, or the highest point that you got was in 2016, you had a total of 78 positions. Now, these are budgeted positions, mind you, so whether they were filled or not throughout the year, that's, that's another question, I don't, I don't have an answer to that. But I will say that there were, there were times when you had more and less. What I do want to make sure and emphasize is, on streets there, which is there towards the very middle, since 2008, there's been seven, again, budgeted positions, seven to eight, seven to eight positions that have been budgeted. Now, this doesn't include the 17, 18 year, or the 18, 19 year, so I want to make sure that that's, that we understand that. So this is, the year 2016 to 17 is the last reported. So what you see there, again, is a total of all the positions and all the budgeted positions that we reported back to the audit. So in the analysis, where I'm going with this is, is some of the positions, again, the bigger departments, divisions, have kept pretty steady as far as the number, okay? What we're proposing here is pretty significant increase to streets, so if the maximum amount we've ever had for the past 10 years has been, has been eight people, then we're proposing an increase of an additional two or five positions. So I just want to make sure that the Council is aware of that, the Police Department has increased as far as numbers, and so I just wanted to make sure that the Council kind of had a historical view of what it is that has been budgeted, and if you have any questions, I'll be more than happy to, again, we report these numbers to the audit. Yes?
First of all, I'd like to commend you, I mean, you did a lot of work, I do commend you on that. However, did you set aside for the 380 agreement with HEB? Have you, have you?
I believe so, Justin.
Have you budgeted for that? I didn't see it anywhere.
Yes, we're on budgets for consultants and contracts under services, page five.
Page five.
We started off, in 2017, 18, we provided $180,000 payments.
Hold on one second. Okay. What line?
Under services, 101302. It's not me, and you should be at 180, and currently we're at 45,000, so we have a budget of $8,000.
Since you're there, can you also explain something to me? The 308 account, what is that?
Contractual.
That was just added.
Yeah, I'm glad you got that, that's what we're talking about, is the, click for dilapidated, dilapidated structures, is the $38,000 that we're talking about.
The 38.
Renting equipment.
I got you, because it wasn't.
That was, that was an addition, yes, you're right. And we did that, again, to budget some money for equipment that we may need for demolition.
And could you also explain to me the city pool? There's a difference of approximately $45,000, is that, is that an employee cut?
I believe we divided that for those positions, is that right, Justin?
Well, we're looking at one.
City pool.
The service center?
The service center, yes.
Okay, so for those lines, we have three individuals, two individuals because it's an administrative duty, and they do all the purchase orbiting requests, all the administrative work for the utility fund and the general fund. So they were split between general fund and the utility fund, as well as the mechanic, which does servicing, the utility workers vehicles, with Police Department, and all other general. So those were split out, their accounts were in both general funds.
Since we're on page five, under last year's budget, there's $55,000 for severance pay for City Manager. We were told that had to be included in this budget, over by law. Is that law or not?
To my knowledge, it is not law. But again, I can check with Bobby, but to my knowledge, it's not. Hopefully things don't go south with me, but if they do, then.
It's fine.
Because the severance package has nothing to do with the law, per contract.
I just want to be clear on that.
Yes, I could check on that, but I'm doing this.
Yes, probably.
Okay, I've got several questions regarding the hot fund, please, if we can turn to the hot fund, please. Sure. Has $5,000 of overtime, can you explain that to me? It's there for no employee coming out of there.
Our maintenance, for the building maintenance, whenever they do rentals, the overtime for the building maintenance, the one that opens, that closes, and inspects everything, there's about $5,000 of overtime in there. So depending on where they clock in, if it's doing other functions of activities, but if it consists of the civic center, those duties are reported under the.
But quite honest with you, that has, that shouldn't be in the hot funds, being taken out of the hot funds should be out of the general.
Well, because the civic center is paid under the hot fund.
But it's, it's the building, the building itself, it's not the employee.
It's not, because you can't, it is liable, if you look at our new tax of change, of new renovations, so you can't pay employees out of the hot fund if it's a building, if it's a.
If it's test beds, and you're promoting an event that, that, you can make the argument that you paid, that you're promoting.
It's a great line. It's actually a great line, but I don't think.
But the other thing is, is I want to make sure of, one of the things we'll look at is, and I know that, again, it's not even yet, but one of the things we'll look at is that there has to be, our maintenance of our buildings, and I know that the maintenance folks do the best they can, but we do need, and we'll look at, not say we're gonna bring it to Council, but we will look at some, some different methods as far as maintenance of the buildings, and what I'm talking about, that we have our staff doing that, but for them to keep up with all of them, by keeping up there, my hope is we can get some contractual work to handle some of the maintenance, that's what my.
Is that the same thing for the 15, 15 grand for the supplies? Is that, is that janitorial supplies as well?
To be able to facilitate that.
Can you also explain to me what the hot fund audit entails?
We have selected six hotels each year, the bargaining and the streets, so what happens is New E Services is our vendor, and we select them, and they come in, do an audit, and identify to us if there's any deficiencies in their collection reporting, and then they go ahead and submit payment to us. And then they also do the collections for.
So it's, it's budgeted for 15 grand, is that how much they charge?
Yes, $6,000.
So they're collecting for us?
They actually collect for us, they remit payment to us. So instead of collecting here, they're collecting, keeping accountability, making sure everybody's, and actually, it's allowed us to get on track and make sure everybody's doing their monthly four years.
We understood that it was a one-time audit to collect outstanding taxes.
It is a one-time audit, but depend, we broke it down by how many hotels we have. So we had 13, we only needed six, so that's what we were able to afford at the time. So this year, again, they already sent out a letter to me saying, okay, we have six more upcoming, would you like for us to audit these? upcoming, would you like for us to audit these or go with them? So it is a one-time audit that we can do, but we only selected our six major ones. And then in the event you want to go back, we present to council. But they continue to collect our hotel taxes.
Is that the company from Breton Bridge, from Alabama, so we're in Alabama? I, I saw a form from, that says Alabama on there. What, what is that?
So that's whenever they do their quarterly reports and they remit payment to them, and then they go ahead and I'm able to see everything online and make sure everything's up to.
Is that the same company?
It's the same company. It's community services. One that audit and the ones that collect for us.
On that hotel issue, well, what used to be done, and I don't know if they can do that, the financial advisors that we have that we don't pay unless work gets done, we would submit all hotels through the financial advisor. The financial advisor would complete all hotels, because we have to prove to them how we know those are the most traffic at hotels versus the others. We can have a little hotel that looks at no action and they're getting the most because their rates are low. So what we used to do, we don't, we didn't have to pay a certain individual for just six. We would pay the financial advisor once the work was completed and all the hotels would be done. Because now we get into an issue, why those six and why not the other six? And then we leave one under the radar, just like the one that was next to Casadores. That one flew under y'all's radar for two years without paying taxes. And then the state came and shut them down, and then they reopen. But all these can fly under the radar if we're not watching, but that financial advisor could go into place where it won't be as much budgeted.
Okay. Since we're still on the hot funds, I've got a concern on the, of the expenditure of 150, 50,000 for community promotion. And the reason I have a problem with it is that back in March or in April, I had asked the finance director, how much was spent? What was the budget, what was the total cost of that, of that event? Nobody can give me a straight answer, and I'm concerned because we're budgeting this amount of money again and, and still no accountability.
Right.
And it was a Christmas event, and they were throwing each other under the bus. And I just wanted to get some clarification on this, how much was spent, you know, so on and so forth, because I still haven't gotten good figures on that. I even asked as, as, as early as yesterday, and they still couldn't give me a complete number. There were some numbers missing and, you know.
Excuse me for my lack of knowledge, but what is the process for, for the, I guess events? I know the council approves, but do you approve a budget for these events?
Well, what was presented to us like early on was, we want $60,000 for upcoming Christmas event, for instance. And so it was approved. But after the event, last spring or summer or so, we, we asked for, you know, who spent that money, what was this thing on whatever, and no one seemed to have a.
Clear answer. And as being stewards, I mean, we, we have to take, be accountable to this.
There should be a very finite record that delineates it.
Yeah, my concern, I agree with y'all as well. That's what I wanted to know with this, you know, with the Christmas events, the backpacks, the festivals. I'm not known to approve one set amount in the past and say, you got 60,000, do what you want. We used to, in the past, is bring me, the chamber used to do it for us, and they would bring us a list of bands and we would, we wouldn't, they wouldn't even put the names, they would just put the cost and this and that. And we would approve individually. The week following the event, we would have the cost of what we spent and what we made one week after the event. The other thing, the other thing that I have when we're talking about the Christmas and the backpack, that was brought to my attention, that we don't shop locally, school giveaway, we're going to shop locally. We do? Okay.
No, the only thing we don't purchase here is the backpacks, because this is a store that they can't order, or they can't, like last year we tried ordering, they don't send it.
Yeah. And HEB actually contacted me and I told them we'd get on it for next year. They give the backpacks with six free items in it if we order bulk. My thing is we've got to shop locally, shop Pierceoff first. And also, all that stuff needs to be brought individually to the council, budgeted, not just because we have 60,000 dollars budgeted.
The backpacks is donations, is not use tax Pierce.
Yeah, it's fine, but we want to keep our donations spent in Pierceoff, you know, to make that money run. But these events, that if we have 60,000, the person that's helping put the event together, they don't have full control over that. They have to get approval from all of the council in order to spend that money.
We could come up with an improved process if we could.
Yes.
Most of the events were handled out of the tourism business department, which replaced prominent purpose, the chamber. And every item was budgeted for and approved by the city manager. So we bring in the name of the bands and so forth, and the CM.
No, and I understand that.
But allowing to finish.
Never finish.
And the Christmas one is confusing because it was always managed out of the city manager's office, out of the admin office. So a lot of that went through there and never came through my office. So I helped with a part of it, but not the whole part. So it was done by multiple departments, and that's where it gets confusing.
Okay. Thank you for that. But my concern is the city manager does not approve money. The council is the one that says yes. City manager does what the council tells them to do. We are here to, we're here to protect the taxpayers' dollars and we're here to manage it. The city managers to implement what we say goes as the council. And that is the problem that, the concern I have, is that we were given the city manager 60,000 dollars, and he was the only one that said yes or no. I'm not saying it has nothing to do with your department, I'm saying we have to find the right protocol, because this money's being spent and we have no answers. And when you have no answers, you start to think crazy things.
So moving forward, it makes perfect sense if the council wants to have more control, more inputs, come together, decide what that should be, if that's something we want. Right now, we're talking about an event coordinator, no discussion or finalization has been made as to how that's going to happen, who's going to control it, who's going to yay or nay it, just give them the money and let them figure it out.
Of course not, yes. But event coordinators can always work with your department if that's what the council chooses to do. We're, we're trying to manage this money and get answers, like with Councilman Veria, he wants to know where this money was spent and who said yes. And that's one of the biggest concerns. If they, if I ask and they show it to me, then I'm okay with it. But the thing is, we're not getting answers. And that's the only problem.
And I just want to clarify that nothing was done without permission. Everything was processed according to the way we were asked to process it, and no one has ever had an issue with it until maybe this passed here. So for the most part, moving forward, we can address it. I'd really like to get away from saying things that are, weren't done appropriately, because they were done according to the way things were approved as far as I understand. May not be what you want now, which is fine. Fix it. Okay.
And with that Christmas event, yes, we did approve 60,000. But you know, when, when the council asks for a record of things, there should be a definite record on file that can be provided.
At any time.
At any time. At any time. And that is the concern. We've got to look into that. We've got, we've got, we've got to know where it's spent, because 60,000, you know, is a lot of money. And so we, we need to know, when we ask for it, it needs to be on file.
I think.
Yes.
Okay. Well, we're in the hot funds. We can look at 20, 2018, 2019, talks about 250,000 dollars. And then year to date is at 353. It's a pretty big increase. But then, but then, for this proposed year, we're at 250. We come back down instead of going up, we come back down. But yet, the other years, y'all kept going up. And this year, for some reason, y'all are going down.
Talking revenues.
That's, that's one. And then number two is that the consent of the council was to cut the position, and I see where there's zero, it was zeroed out on the salaries. So I'm assuming that that position's been cut. But yet, going back to the final tallies, we're only going to end up at 42,000. Can you explain that to me? There's a trend, there's a trend that's going up, and then this year, up to this year, we're at 153,000 plus.
We're 100, why are we 103,000 over budgeted and we're?
Year to date, actually, that's a pretty good thing. The 353, as far as revenues, we have 353 in the year to date, so you collect 353,000. We could increase, again, most of the numbers that we presented or try to be conservative. I hope that.
Oh, but my question, I'm sorry. Are they actual? Is it actual or it's?
Year to date.
So if I may, now remember, we had done the six audits for local hotels, so a lot of them have been, can't catch them, from 16, 17, putting in all their, so that's why this number is extremely high, and that's why they're conservative, bringing it back down. So you can see in 16, 17, the 178, and then it jumped up to 227, and we budgeted 250, and this was the first year of doing those audits. So that's where all this money has been coming in from delinquent, previous years of delinquent taxes.
And that's only with six hotels.
We have 100,000 dollars from year to date.
It's hard to gauge and make and say we're going to put 350,000, we brought it back down to 250, or hoping everybody is going to come in times, we want to board with those audits, that will help continue with the increase. That's something that we have to, to implement, but we're conservative with the 250 to make sure we have kind of a broad mind that would be a little bit true to the number versus the higher amounts.
Can you, can you go back to the same line, but at 2017? You're looking at 789, 789,000 dollars. And then you come back two years from now, and it's at zero. Is there a payment coming out of there or was there something?
Right, right there, just go to the column. 17, 18 column. It's on page two of the.
Transfer in.
The transfer in.
Your transfer in, the 623, 131 for 17, 18? Is that the one that you're talking about?
Yeah, seven, seven.
So that was for the civic center, the renovations that we had incomplete. So we transferred in from the fund balance to complete the renovation, civic center with ready construction, flooring, the last, all the constructions of the renovations for the civic center.
What was the total top, the total cost for the civic center with renovations?
I don't have that number on me, but I can get it.
Was that brought to council?
Half a million dollars. Yes.
Was that brought to the council for approval or any transfers or any?
Or, yes, all of this. And then, so right now, we have no transfer in, so it's coming down.
Justin, you explain, and just real quick, so we're all square, the transfer in fund balance, and the difference between the general fund and the reserves, you know what I'm saying, those three rows there, just so they can understand what you're saying.
It's basically the same thing, the transfer in from the fund balance and the transfer in from the reserves, it's the same. We just utilize different ones to kind of identify, different. But it is the, the 98 that we did with flooring, for 86,000, that was the last of the flooring, the epoxy lay down for the civic center, that was the last project that we did. So the civic center is completely completed.
Okay. The question is, what is the difference between general fund and reserves? What do you mean by reserves?
Is it reserve from hotel fund or from the general?
I want to explain to you.
I want to explain.
No.
The fund balance and reserve, it's just a different term that they, that we use from the previous financial director term, but it is basically the same thing.
But is it the fund balance from the hotel fund?
Yes, yes.
Because we have two reserves. We have the general reserve and then we have the hotel reserve.
That is correct.
Okay. I just found out how much balance we have in there yesterday, because there's nowhere in here does it say how much is our fund balance, our balance entirely for that hot fund. Because I was under the understanding that we only had the 42,000 dollars after everything's said and done. See, but there, there's no explanation in here. You understand what I'm saying? Now, if you don't look at this financial report, then you wouldn't find it. See, I mean, we just got to be, we just got to be a little bit more transparent, because, you know, it took me a while to figure it out. Oh, here it is.
Yes. And we did that every month, and I understand that, yes, what is the difference? This is your budget and that's your actual.
Right. But this is not the final total, though, because this is actually.
As of that date.
As of that date it is, but we still have a couple of more to go, correct? So, so, so what, I, I think what I want, and I feel more comfortable if you tell me, how much do we currently have when we finish, when we finish up and start the new fiscal year? Because I like to know exactly where we're at and if, if both numbers jive, because if they don't jive, then there's a problem.
Yes. And the way we work with finance will always be behind or before. So in, in the middle of the month when we do our council meetings, it's August 14th. I can only give you last month because we've already closed out, everything's been written out. So that's why it's always as, there is, even though we're providing the council meeting August 14th, that's the true number for me, because that's already been done. I can't tell you, I can print you out a cash report for that date, but I have to go in and reconcile everything. So everything changes, so we try and do at the end of the month.
I have a question. We're still on hotel tax funds. Where is it reflected, our donations to the real pioneer festival and the clay busters and all of those things that we give away? Where is that reflected in the budget? I, I've seen budget hearings in other cities, and that is on the agenda, where they make presentations to the council and they ask for, and we got a budget for it.
I can tell you this, and it's a bit different in every city, but, but we can do this, and we, if it's not implemented, we can do, is where you have the different groups that are asking for money, come and ask those dollars from the council, opposed to having the staff, they can still come present you a budget, as opposed to staff making an argument for any group or a particular, whatever that may be. You can have it to a process of where they come and ask for, you can have an application to where you know how much somebody's applying for. Again, doesn't mean they're going to get the funding, but those, those meetings and all those requests happened before the budget season. And my apologies, because I, again, I'm, I'm trying to catch up a little bit here, but, but those things happened before, that's part of the budget process. So when people are coming in and they're not hitting you up during the middle of the year, and I'm saying this, this is in general statement, you already know what you're going to budget, because people have already requested it, or they've come before the council to request, whatever event, whatever it is prior to. I know it's hard, tough sometimes, because it requires some degree of planning, but it is something that the council can use.
Last question. Last question I have on the hot, on this. I still wasn't, I don't understand, I hate to use that word, I don't understand it. I still, it still puzzles me that we have 300, according to the financial statement, 380 something thousand in the hot fund. With still two months to go for the collection, because they collect every three months. And it doesn't, doesn't match at the end of the year, even with the explanation that I was giving of the sixth audit, that we're only going to end up at 42,000. It doesn't, I don't understand that.
42. You're subtracting, 42,000, subtracting the, on one extra hot, you're looking at the same things.
He's number.
He's looking at the last line. Revenues over or under expenditures?
Are you referring to 42,824 dollars? That's budgeted for this year. It has nothing to do with the 300,000, 353.
But if we, I guess what they're asking, the revenue should.
The year to date should be higher.
Should be higher.
It should not be 163.
The proposed budget for 2019.
I mean, for this disruption, yeah.
Well, I have a question on that. What, go ahead.
What, what?
When, when, when were these stipends enacted?
February nineteen.
Okay, exactly.
During the budget.
Like a month or whatever.
It would've been in the budget.
Did you find out about them until last month?
October first, when we approved the budget and we go into the fiscal year, all thirty of these payroll changes were conducted with the stipends, okay, unplaced stipends, like a critical area pay. If they were interim or assistants or whatever the case may be, depending on that salary, that we went and had approved and so if they approved, we went through personnel and then they were started up.
And I can share with the council, I don't have a form, but I can share the increase to your budget, I mean, overall budget, how these stipends laid out, if you don't have any information, we can, we can share with the council.
I'm gonna go back to this utility, I'm just trying to understand the, the budget. When it comes to that Christmas incentive, how many employees do we have under the one that I'm looking at, the utility fund? The one on page three?
Uh, we currently have two.
Okay, so if we're giving them seventy-five dollars each, shouldn't that current budget be one fifty? Okay, is that one ten?
Yes.
Okay. So that, that, that's another thing that when I look at this budget at home and I'm studying it, you know, people's foods on the table is at stake, you know, and if we're not given the right numbers, we go home and we study and we're messy with numbers that are not correct. You know, and I know it's just seventy-five dollars a Christmas bonus, but I was clarified that's what each employee got. But here it's one ten, we don't have an employee and a half. So here we're missing forty dollars for that seventy-five dollars. And if I go to each individual, that's what I'm looking at because this is numbers and they gotta be accurate for a budget.
It's a hundred and twenty-five each.
A hundred and twenty-five each?
That's after tax, because each check is taxed.
So every employee got one twenty-five?
They cross the board and it's, they have deductions on it, there's not just a flat.
So, that, that's fine.
Yeah.
That's fine, but my thing is, is that we're budgeted a hundred and ten per department, okay, so y'all are telling me that per department, we, we budget each employee, there's two employees under this budget.
Yeah.
And we're under the one incentive check. So now that's gonna come back to where we're gonna go year-to-date over budget. Like, we have a lot of year-to-date over budget. We don't wanna do that next year, we wanna stay within budget. And that is a concern.
And you, you can see on the general fund, it is, it isn't identified correctly, so on the general fund, just so we are aware that we do provide Christmas incentive on the board, um, but in the general fund, the Christmas incentive was seven forty-five, and we had two people in there, so it was, um, higher on this side and that's where the utility.
Yeah, and I, no, and I understand that, but when we do a budget, and this is, we had a finance director doing ten years ago, where we pull from here to pay here, you don't do a budget like that. You stay within the budget, we're not gonna keep pulling from the general fund just 'cause we're over budgeting on the general fund to pay the library, to pay municipal, to pay water bills. You don't do that, we follow this, 'cause then we have to amend it, the council members have to amend it, you can't just move it without us amending it. And I don't think we amended every single one, that, that's the only thing.
I, I take the, we'll do this coming here, well, we're gonna try to step up, the next meeting is make sure on amendments, you know, I haven't talked to Joseph about this, but we do as far as making sure the process of amending budgets, that we're all clear as to what, what the resolution has been approved, current resolution, and how we, the process for amending budgets. So we'll, we'll go get that to the council and let you review the last resolution, so we're all square on, on amendments and how they're supposed to work according to, to what was approved after the 2017, is that right, Joseph?
Yes.
The, the resolution? So if that resolution needs to be amended, maybe you can do that.
It's, it's stated as almost identical to the last resolution.
Okay.
Yes, Robert?
Um, let's get to the Main Street program, please.
Where's that at, Robert?
On the tab, uh, let's see, page, uh, seven?
Yes.
The first page, um, okay, um, what you put on here, Fred, was the downtown grant. That's the facade program. Can you explain? I mean...
What, what is?
The applications that we have currently pending.
What?
So, it's, it's a done deal, we, we stopped it, I mean, what, what, I mean...
That, that would be the effect, yes, sir, is we would say we're no longer doing the, now, if those get approved before October the first, then we could say we'll, we'll, we'll agree to it. But again, when we, when we take this step, if this is what the direction the council wants to take, is we're saying we're eliminating the program, uh, if that's what the, if that's what I understood, I wanna make sure that that's, that's what we're saying. We eliminate the program, all I'm asking is keep some of the salary and some of the training budget, but everything else, uh, as far as the Main Street program, would be, would be eliminated. So I, I just want, I wanted to make sure I understood that's what the council, uh, is asking, I'm asking, I know that you wanted the position to be cut as well, but I, I, what I'm saying is I need the position to, to help us out.
So, you're, you're saying that you wanna keep the position, but, but what position? If, if there's not a Main Street program?
That, that position, what, again, one of those two positions that I had under, under the city manager, we need to have, we still need to have somebody to help with, with the building official work, there's, there's gonna have to be some, some additional things that, whether it's the person that's currently in position or somebody else, we still need that help with, with, with making sure that we're, we're still meeting the needs of the city, uh, as it relates to, to the buildings, building programs, somebody's gotta maintain the internet, somebody to expect that we're cutting tourism, so we're gonna have to keep some people.
So, under, under the charter on six point zero four, that means it, it's stating that you have to go out to get the most qualified person for the position you're looking for, is that correct?
Yes.
Is that correct?
Yes. I have a question. So, if, if you're wanting a position to be under administration, question, uh, Main Street is not an administration, I mean, uh, why, why don't you move it on the area development or?
Again, those are the positions you get cut, those are the positions, we, we talk tourism, economic development, we, we, those are the positions that were on the last, the last presentation, so there's, there's, there was some significant cuts, particularly community development, you have, you have a budget of a hundred and nineteen thousand dollars that was cut from the budget. Um, which again, we, we, we on our end, from the office side, need some, some help to try to still keep that.
I understand that, but why do you still label it Main Street?
Again, we can make that change and, and cut out the Main Street, I'll, I wanna make sure from the council, make sure I understood that we wanna give it, we can make and put it under administration, that salary and those, those things that I need for training, but I, I wanted to make sure that the council, we all agreed that that.
So, so you're gonna be hiring two people?
We'll have two staff, yes, sir, for, for, to work with you.
Yes. And, and you're gonna go out for applications and all that?
Well, he has to under the charter, charter, uh, six point zero four, be.
Yeah, and the chart that you provided was two that are right underneath you. That's what you showed in the, the chart? Those would be the two right underneath you?
Yes, yes, so we're, we're hoping to do that, but it's worth the commission.
And I'm okay with that and also with like economic development, because you don't want to be paying an economic development if you don't have anything big coming yet. When we get something introduced to us and proposed to us, then that's when you would bring it up, that we need to start finding an economic developer, 'cause if we've been paying this salary, haven't seen any new economic development.
Yes, sir. Quick question, um, so if there's no program, so why is there still telephone system, operating supplies, uh, why is there still money?
We still, we still have to, again, account to some extent for moving to the new building, so I'd like to have some of those funds to be able to, to make those moves out.
Right.
Now, whether that comes with the, how much they're gonna charge for that, I don't have an idea, because I don't know what the cost of that building would be, but I do need some dollars to say, look, yeah, we're gonna move over there and use some of these funds for that.
So we may not spend it and we may not use it, it's just they're ready for us to open an office.
One other, one other thing on, on, on that is that the, the, the money that was made off of festivals was going to the Main Street program, or is that reflected in revenues for last year?
Good question, uh, I, I'll, I'll be honest with you, I don't.
Do you have a total amount that the festivals made last year?
Hey, does it have a farm, you put on your, um, your, I think, on your financial, actually, how I did it, we have a, how, let's see if I can pull a high cash report, it's a revitalization fund, so it's a totally different fund. And then once we identified what we actually wanna do with this program and what we wanna invest in, whether it be pocket parks or whatnot, that fund would become active with a, with a plan and a budget in which I want to go ahead and invest for the revitalization fund, I believe that forms a, a.
But was that money profited?
Yes.
That's money that profited, not the money that we spent?
No, this is, so your revitalization claim on that, we have sixteen thousand, seven hundred and eighty-two eighty, so that was, um, we did the entry fee for the Cinco de Mayo.
Is that all festivals in one?
That's, so that's.
Okay, so profit comes after what we put in it. So, if we put a hundred thousand dollars in the Cinco de Mayo festival, in order to make profit, we had to make a hundred and sixteen thousand. If we didn't make a hundred thousand or, I'm just saying, if that, 'cause I, I've been asking to, I need the number for the Cinco de Mayo, if we spend, and this is just a, a number, it's not accurate, if we spend a hundred thousand dollars at Cinco de Mayo to get this festival going, and we made, we collected sixteen thousand, we did not profit.
This is just, it's, it's just the money that was collected.
Okay, so this is not profit?
No, it wasn't profit, because, because we spent fifty thousand, we didn't make fifty thousand, but the money that we collected, we don't need to make sure.
So that's sixteen thousand?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
So, is, is that reflected in this, in this fact report that you have here?
No.
No.
No, we don't have anything, um, for the revitalization.
Is there any account that's not in the account?
'Cause if we only collected sixteen thousand, we don't have money to pay Main Street. We don't have the money, we only collected sixteen thousand off three festivals.
No, 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 no.
What are you talking about? Go ahead.
No, no, that money was being used for the, some of the facade program?
Um, so for our, in our general fund, under the Main Street program, we don't, we identified twenty thousand for the facade program.
Right.
Um, now, for the events and stuff, it was an entry fee, like donation, from the citizens to go ahead and contribute to a revitalization fund, whether it be a pocket park or something for downtown.
It's really not a donation, 'cause we, we made them pay.
Yes, so that's where that money was going to, for a revitalization fund of downtown, and that money has been set aside until we're able to identify.
So in the budget, where is that money at?
It's not included in that.
It's really some reserves and reserve.
It's in the reserves?
It's, it's in its own economy, it provides for that, 'cause I saw it, we identified it to you. It's in your other, other, it's.
Or should we say?
That's three hundred and thirty-five thousand.
Well, there's other funds.
Other. So, in, in the future, can, can, can you, can you list what others?
I can, I can, yes.
Yeah, 'cause we usually, you could put that in the budget, under, like, under miscellaneous, so when we refer to that, where it's not actually budgeted, it's just, uh, numbers that we're gonna look at, because we're, we're budgeting for festivals, so we need, not that reserves have to have their own entity, and I understand that, but we need to know, did this work? So we can budget more money, or do we take away, or do we do less by looking at miscellaneous? It's just a question.
Yes, um... On the, uh... On the Main Street, um... My understanding was that, you know, we were gonna cut the position, that's what was my understanding. Um... Why we're still talking about it, I don't know.
Mm-hmm.
You know, second of all, um... There's still two projects, regardless if the council cuts it or not, that position still has a month and a half of work.
Yes.
And there's still two, two projects that need to be completed.
Okay.
And that's Mr. Barnhart's on downtown, on Colorado and Oak, and I believe it was Garcia's that we voted on like a month ago.
Okay.
And I don't think it'll take them past a month and a half, because the current, when they did their project, it took them, I mean, like, two weeks to get it done.
Just like you were treating.
So, if, if the ball gets dropped, it's gonna get dropped in-house, not, you know, with these individuals, Mr. Barnhart or Garcia's.
What, what we could do is this, is we treat it just like any other, any other budgeted item, if it's, if it's encumbered, if it's expensed before the end of the fiscal year, we will pay for it out of this fiscal year. Anything on October the first, that we don't receive, for instance, we don't receive receipts of things we need, then it's, it'd be up to whoever it is that.
Because you can still reconcile, reconcile, even though you're closing the month out, you can keep those funds alive.
By accounting standard, you cannot, you cannot cut it to next fiscal, it wasn't, it's, this isn't budgeted for next fiscal year.
So, I mean, you can recur it? Could you recur it?
But you, you can't go and say, for instance, I have an expense, I have something that, a liability this month, but I know, with the liability, I'm not gonna actually expense anything until October, it's gotta come out of next year's budget. If, if we don't have that budget amount for next year, then, then we don't have any money to, for these people to complete the project. What I'm getting at is, is a project has to be complete and you have to have a receipt, you have to have some sort of encumber.
Oh, because it's a grant, it's not just a, it's not a line item?
So, I, my understanding is, this is what we're talking about right now, starts October first, so I still have two, my facades have been completed, and I have got, one is, I'm getting their checks, once they're done, it'll be completed. I have another one, that's Garcia's, that was already approved, they have until September thirty-first to complete that project, meaning they get their reimbursement till then. I also have one more applicant that I approved with my board, that I need to bring to y'all next month, but that, that's some last budget here, so that has nothing to do with what we're doing right now, because this is what we did last year, and if the other three were approved through, this new applicant should get the same respect that they got and be looked at the same way, because that was last year, which is this, this budget year that we're in right now. So anything that comes forward, in October first, that's different, because we may not have a budget as we go forward, but what, what is done right now, which is next in September, that still has to do with eighteen, nineteen, so, so that has nothing to do with what y'all are talking about right now.
And again... That's totally wrong, because, she's totally wrong, because, I don't know if she understood what I said, I said that if we cut the posi- position...
Yes, sir.
That position is still open till a month and a half.
Yes, sir.
Got it? A month and a half.
Why are you raising your voice?
Got it? A month and a half.
I understand.
Okay, so the whole deal is that, that position is still open for a month and a half.
Yes, sir.
So those two jobs need to be completed within a month and a half.
I agree.
Okay, so nobody's saying anything about next year's budget.
Right.
Thank you. Saying, talking about next year's budget, I'm talking about.
Okay, yes, no more.
I have a question on, um, this is page one. Municipal court, is that gonna be enough budgeted for a program? Two years ago, we were budgeting over a hundred and twenty thousand, and we're down to one hundred thousand.
What are you looking at?
Municipal court.
Municipal court.
And, and I'm looking at, you know, if, if we're gonna be, uh, if we're gonna be getting serious about, uh, permit violations or ordinances, uh, code enforcement and so forth, uh, there's gonna be more work coming through and so forth, and so, I don't, I don't think that that is enough for that program, for that department.
You're on page one, sir?
I'm on page one.
I see the year-to-date, that's seventy-five thousand.
It's, it's under revenue.
Okay, expenditure, expensive? Expenditure.
The proposed budget for next year is a hundred thousand, eight hundred eighty-eight.
But they've only spent seventy-five thousand so far, we're already gonna finish it.
Well, I, I, I think that that was because there was, uh, transition in between and so forth.
Oh, like a payment or, like a payroll, maybe?
Well, the transition between the two directors of the two people.
Because we were without a judge for a while.
Is that what I'm saying, like a payroll to a few paychecks?
I think we cut the, that was one of the part-time positions, so that's why you see a difference. Sure, uh, of the part-time clerk, and so you have, so have a full-time clerk and a more part-time.
We can always add it as needed, if we do get enough clerk.
Yes, sir. So, anyway.
So, could, could we go ahead and budget that, that part-timer out there?
We, we could add the part-time clerk, if y'all wanna keep it on.
Take me to Main Street and put the partner over there.
I, I honestly, on my end, I can, I can, I'm telling the council, if we cut more positions here, seeing all the positions that affect the operations, I can only tell you that it's not gonna be, uh, I can't, I can't assure the council that we're gonna perform effectively if we cut any additional office staff, that's all I can say.
Ain't got my support, that's all I can say.
So, so is that, is that, uh... I don't know if that's gonna be enough in the municipal court?
We can add the position, I mean, again, I'm not, I'm not for municipal court, part-time personnel, that, that, that makes sense, if you wanna keep it on, I don't have to.
Because you can always add it as needed, and we come back and we amend the budget, if the works, the workflow gets more and the numbers show monthly, when they do a monthly report, do the municipals do monthly reports?
Yes, they do.
Okay, I'm just saying.
Judge is not here, you can, you can answer.
So if the monthly report, we see an increase, we can go back, if we don't see an increase.
We can add the position, yes.
Well, obviously, there's gonna be an increase, we have a co, we're gonna have a co-compliance officer out there.
Yes.
So, there, there's gonna be.
Okay.
There, this, you know.
Yeah, we can add the position, it's not, it's not a lot, it's just for dollars, it's, they don't give you benefits, it's, it's just a part-time position.
There's no benefits, I mean, it's just.
It's a position, yes.
Because it was already there, right?
Yes, ma'am.
I have a question, I have a comment. One of the things that, that we have, we had talked about in the council, and I, I am still interested in pursuing is either contracted service, uh, for grant writing, or a grant writer, uh, position, because, uh, you know, I read and I hear about cities that acquire monies, funds, that are used for all kinds of things, streetskates, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera.
Yes.
But they have somebody that is actively on that job, uh, either part-time or full-time, but a, a grant writer position, I don't know how the rest of the council feels, but that I feel will be a benefit to our community, since we do have great needs in infrastructure and, and other areas as well. And I don't know if, uh, we could cut enough to, to, to be able to hire somebody in that, in that position. The, the other concern I had is, is the health inspection, uh, do we have allowances for health inspector services or anything?
I, I don't know if the county, who's responsible?
County, it's, it used to be, uh, Dr. Smith.
There's a new one.
Who?
Um... Was it, somebody from Dr. Khan's office was doing the, is Khan next to the dollar?
Yeah, my office with.
The county, the county used to pay the.
Yeah, because the county had, I, I went to one of those meetings and they were talking about replacing Dr. Schmidt.
Okay.
But the county's in charge and they, they.
Yeah, they have a budget.
They were talking about that, and I thought they said Dr. Khan's office.
Yeah, but he's not doing that at all, but I will ask the judge.
I don't know who's Fergie that falls.
They had it in a meeting, 'cause they were trying to replace Dr. Schmidt.
Yeah, if you have a county health inspector and somebody that, I don't know if the county takes any of those responsibilities, so it'd be kinda hard for me to say to add a position, not knowing whether they, they carry that already, they might.
Well, I, I don't have anything to inspect it, uh, the, the other thing is that, um... Where, where all the license fees, they can, they can reflect it in the budget?
Licenses?
Licenses for water, licenses for whatever, are they reflected in the budget?
We have the, the stipends, uh, we have heavy equipment operator.
The licenses?
No, we're, we're talking, talking about license, contracted licenses, we, we have to contract licenses, because, uh, we don't have staff on board, it's licensed.
People that are paid, I think they come from Honda, I believe that's under utility, under the, uh...
How much do we spend on that?
We're at, um, there's a, eighty-seven under utilities.
And utilities?
Under waste water treatment, there's other professional services now, it's using seven thousand. Year-to-date, like, six thousand.
Of the general fund?
You two.
No, utilities. They're proposed seventy.
It's seventy thousand? And, and, and who all are we paying seventy thousand to?
These guys are coming from Honda, right?
Contact them.
Um, yes, we do have two individuals that are paying the licenses for the, the facility, and which we do pay.
There's other individuals, but who are they? Is it a service, is it a company?
They're individuals.
Yeah, they, they come from Honda, I believe, that's where they come in to do work on, on our, at, at, at least the inspection part, but it is, it is a concern for me, and I know that, I don't think that we have anybody licensed here, we don't, so let me talk about this.
So if we hire a public works director, is it mandated that he have this license or not?
We're, we're gonna recommend that they have a Class B license for water and sewer.
Okay.
Uh, that's what we, I mean, that's gonna be ideal, preferably somebody with, with a background in, in public works.
And that's one that they cut, that y'all cut, uh, Huber license?
Yeah, fifteen licenses.
That's the one y'all cut?
What are you talking about, it's fifteen licenses?
So you find, yeah.
We post a position, like I said, those would be the things that we require is the licenses.
Exactly.
Could, could you also see if maybe, uh, maybe sponsor somebody in-house, maybe, you know, I mean, somebody that's, wants to do it?
You know how long it takes to get those licenses?
There's a, there's a gentleman.
They gotta go to school, and they gotta take tests, three years.
I mean, sign a contract with the individual.
There's a gentleman on the, on the sewer side, it's a gentleman on the sewer side that's really close, he's actually pretty impressive guy, uh, I think his license is, he's really close to testing, I, he, he sticks with us, but he, uh...
Yes, he does.
He, he had that, that's on the sewer side, but then you need also, we need to have somebody on the water side, we don't have, one thing I didn't, I didn't mention, Joseph, we don't have in there some sort of a, uh, incentive for, for Class B, any of the licenses, most cities, the cities I've been a part of, they, they, they reward employees for, for having these credentials, I think he started with Class D, C, the toughest one, the credential for water and sewers is Class B, uh, those are really hard licenses to acquire, uh, and I, and I haven't seen the test, but I hear they're pretty, pretty tough, uh, so that's.
They had an employee like that, and soon as they got the license, they went somewhere else to put higher pay, so it's very difficult.
That's true.
We had two, I think Conrad and Vonda had it, and Rudy and Temple, and they were all terminated.
Well, we'll work on that, if, we'd like to, and I didn't include it in the budget, we'd like to see if you can include some sort of incentive for employees that are, that are currently, uh, working towards that, or having, at least have their seats, and again, that's not included in the budget, uh, but I'd like to, to see if you can come back and make that change possible.
I do have a question.
What page?
I'm not on any page necessarily, but, uh, last year, the, the twenty-twelve, uh, payment was included in the general fund, this year it's not included in the general fund.
Oh, the CLs.
The CLs, okay.
Yes.
And... What I see as the offset is, is, is the, the state private revenue, four, four hundred and eighty-six thousand, uh, when we add to that, to the general fund, that, that increases, uh, our fund there, but what I'm, what I'm looking at, unless I'm, I'm, I'm wrong about this, is if we move seven hundred and seventeen dollars or whatever was coming out of twenty sixteen, what, twenty sixteen, to INS...
Yes, sir.
Then shouldn't we have a much lower general fund budget than six million, one hundred eighty?
Well, that difference, I think, is close to, you're gonna take about five hundred and fifty thousand. Well, that difference, I think, is close to, you would take about 550,000 dollars. On the, if you compare the current budget to the proposed, it'd be 550,000 dollar difference. On top of that, just make sure the councils, what you are going to have to take with the annexation, again, come to planning is you are going to have to take the lights, all of the road maintenance that now requires, that's going to require maintenance, what, what due to that annexation. So the question that comes is, you, you want to go ahead and, you're seeing, what you see in revenues is on the annexation part, for the most part. You look to see where most of the revenues came from as far as property tax, you'll see that mostly it came from the annexation. And what I mean by that is the tax rate stays the same, but you, you put on there approximately about 158,000 dollars due to that annexation. But again, you're also going to be responsible for the policing out there. County no longer has been overseeing that. You're going to be responsible for the lights and the maintenance on the general fund.
So your general budget is going to increase?
Yes, if, 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 again, we don't know the, the amount yet because we haven't, we don't know how many calls. The chief, the chief may need an officer in the near future, maybe another officer because we're, you know, he's going to have to take that area on. We didn't propose that in the budget, but we know, at least I know it's coming. Uh, where you may have more, he may have calls out there, uh, the lights that, I don't know as far as the lights that, that we're responsible for and that amount, I don't know that yet. But, but that's something that, again, we did, I did account for because I know that there's going to be additional cost, um, when we do and we should be taking on that, of that responsibility.
I have a question. Um, do, did y'all already put the tax of beta site for HEB?
Yes, I believe that's, that was.
It's, it's, it's in here?
Yes.
How much was it?
Um, we had identified 50,000 for the payment to take out for.
However, in regards to the annexation, you're, you're lowballing on the, uh, the sales tax because you still haven't got an entry figure as well.
Yeah, we don't know. Again, they're conservative.
So, so, so you actually did lowball it?
Yes, we, we believe, I believe the estimates are low. Uh, again, you, you don't, we don't know that number, we haven't done the analysis. So it's hard for me to say, yeah, we're going to see more sales tax. I prefer to be on the, on the end where we're not counting.
Right. So, so the, the only thing that concerns me, Fred, is the, uh, the, uh, the lawsuit going on right now with, uh, with stacking, you know? Uh, if, if there's anything that comes over above that sales tax, I think we should put it, put it away just in case, um, you know, something tragic happens in that lawsuit, which I seriously doubt, but, you know.
I think the difference that they have right now is about 40 million dollars. It, it is a significant number to the amount of, of tax. I believe they're, they're proposing 100 million dollars and I think.
So, so how much would that translate to?
My, and I haven't really agreed with state. I don't know that that makes a difference as far as our, our agreement with state because again, that, they're paying us in lieu of taxes. So their assumption is, I don't know, I haven't really agreed with them.
But I believe, I believe they went on the, um, you know, I, I read the contract. I believe they went on a certain, certain set amount. If that set amount, um, comes in lower than that amount, then we owe them the, the, the difference. But if it comes up higher, then, you know, they owe us the difference, you know?
I have to look, to be honest with you. I don't, I don't know.
And I believe, I think it was like 72% or 70, something percent of the value.
I have to look.
Uh, on interest and sinking, page four, the USDA loan, budgeted for 44,125, and year-to-date, zero.
Zero at the end of the year?
It's going to be paid at the end of the year. Is that, is that when it's paid?
September 1st.
And is that going to zero out? And, and what is fire reserves?
The fire reserves is the donation fund that they have. Now, we have the ESP with everything that ESP supports the fire fund and then we have the fire reserve all the donation money that was provided to them, that's a separate fund. Uh, and they utilize it for meetings, travel, some equipment that they will have personally with teachers, that they, kind of, uh, purchasing some of their, uh, donations.
So are we going to refund that, that, that account back to them?
No, this is strictly fire fund, the fire reserves.
Oh.
Yeah, so they, they, they're those proceeds as donations and they extend it however that they like. We just have a better place to apply whatever. And then compensation, clearly ESP is required.
But you haven't heard anything in regards to the council regarding, regarding the...
I haven't, I don't know if you have a fire reserves?
No.
Other stuff?
I verbally spoke to you about some things, but it wasn't, we spoke to Dr. and tell us what he, what he had to do.
They're still utilizing their, their pension.
That's why I couldn't understand because if people don't hate to, they, they can use the, of the, of the, of the city and have it written off as tax. So, I mean, it's, that's, that's.
Under the police forfeiture fund, page one, there's 12,000 proposed for the neighborhood center administration. Let that burn down. What is that? It's page one of the police forfeiture fund.
Okay, so on your page one of the forfeiture fund, we utilize the same, um, departments, which is not true, and because they were out of the neighborhood center, we cover the administration. So if you look at the pages after quarters, on page three, everything I moved it over to administration for the leash for the administration duties. Uh, we identified the, the designation operating supply spent. We put in 105,000 and then for the normal procurement, um, with the district attorney, in which we provide 30% of proceeds. Um, and then there's already a budget identified so the, um, the chief can go ahead and utilize at whatever time he'd like for a certain, um, season. On the neighborhood center, there's nothing on there. It's just something that we've used in the past. It says neighborhood center, but it's, um, they utilize it for meetings and travel and some to me.
So that should be zero. And under income from feeding cases, on page two?
It's the same thing. Um, they, this is a...
Zero budget.
So I moved it over to the forfeiture, the 20,000. We've been getting quite a bit. I mean, you can't say it's not what it is. It's forfeiture fund from the district attorney and seizure of assets. Um, so I moved it, it was before that we utilized it at 8,000, 4,000, 12,000. I just went through forfeiture and took that 20,000, 12,000, all for the seizure, seizure, um, proceeds.
And it's of July 31st. We, they have 23,000 secondary?
Yes, on your plate.
Yes.
On the, so we're talking about the police department, on the certificate pay, I think we had taken, taken it out, stipend on the...
We took off the, the master license, I believe, and, um, did we get the master's chief out there?
We have, we have intermediate license, uh, advanced license, a master, please, officer.
I don't believe there's any, I don't, I think, I don't think there's any, Chief has spoken a little bit about that as well. I don't think there's any compensation for any of those licenses. We could, we didn't ask for it in the budget, but I, we could work some of those, again, some of those in the budget board.
I'd like to see that back, if possible.
We have intermediate, master and...
Yes, we have some that are, were really pushing hard to craft to get that extra incentive pay. We had eliminated some of them, so we can get it back immediately.
We make it, we have it or no?
Yeah, we have, I think, four. There's four of us that have it, that have master.
But that, but that budget was, or they cut that area of the stipend on that.
Is it because we added another employee?
No, I think it was cut last year.
It was just cut last year? Okay. It's not this year that it's cut. It was cut last year.
It's part of the 80, 80, whatever, the...
Chief, was that the, the one that we brought up?
Yes, you guys actually instituted that back in 2015.
Bring it back.
I have a question.
Excuse me, excuse me. Do you, do you have a, a field training officer as well?
Yes, sir, we do.
Does, does he get a stipend as well?
They, they use.
For the field training officer?
It is still there?
It's still there. As long as they turn the paperwork.
For the field training officer?
I have a question. Okay, um, I see that the current budget for training and travel, y'all have nothing budgeted last year for, or this year?
I don't believe so.
Okay. Do y'all, do y'all do training or y'all, did y'all do trainings this year? And how did y'all pay for that?
Uh, some of it was paid out of a control refund. The Texas state provides us about 1,500 dollars a year based, based on the, the number of officers you have employed. The state puts out and efficiently use forfeiture funds.
Okay.
We could increase that amount.
Yeah, because we don't have nothing budgeted this year.
Yeah, it actually, this is kind of surprising because most of the police departments, others, that's a word that they have.
My thing is that they don't got the training budget. I'm sorry. Uh, training and travel?
Is it for forfeiture fund or is this general fund?
No, it's the police department.
Police department.
Or police training.
Because it's in the general fund, so it's a police fund.
Well, why do we have it all over the place? So we don't have it at each individual? What, what's the purpose of having the departments in, having departments with budget and everything? It's in the general fund. It's in the general fund.
So your forfeiture fund is...
But I'm not talking about the forfeiture fund. I'm talking about the training. The training should not come out of the forfeiture, forfeiture funds. It should come out of their budget. And my training, did we?
We have the training, but because they only get limited funds, we don't, we don't utilize those funds all the time. So that's why majority of their, everything is taken out of the general fund. Their training and their forfeiture fund are the extras that we need to...
Yeah, I see the controller only gives them so much. What we should do is be able to give them the rest so they can all get the training they need. On the equipment, how much do we have, um, budgeted for equipment? Because I can't find it under police, so maybe it's under general?
I think they're have, uh, they have one.
Because if we have 5,000 dollars budgeted for equipment, we're going to buy one camera for one car, one camera for one guy?
Just one car?
That's it?
So...
And one tire?
Under the general fund, under...
You still need more money.
Everything, equipment is a total of 80,000, 593. This is under general fund because they're fully supported out of your general fund, out of taxes. Now, maybe the extra is out of your training and then out of your forfeiture fund.
I, I, I don't agree with how the budget looks. I don't agree with... I, we can't, we can't give a department's money.
And that line item is being moved to the...
Those, those funds have to be identified separately.
But yes, we can identify. Look, look how we have, okay, we have administration. We have Main Street Department, Police Department, okay? Under the police train, okay? If we have meetings and trainings, that's 199. We have equipment. I don't want to have the equipment in the general fund with office supply. Office supply and equipment is two different things and training. If we get new body cams that require a certain training, we need to go to equipment for body cams, training for the special body cams, and then, oh, I need a new desk. Then we go to office supplies for the police department. I don't understand this budget and we're, I'm making decisions and I want to do adds and cuts according to the numbers that are given to me, just to be referred to, go to the general fund. It, it's just, it's frustrating. It's frustrating.
So when you talk in page 13?
Is our budget or their budget?
13 and 14?
Page 13 of the police department under the general fund.
So, so isn't it just a, just a quick, just to move?
It identifies office supplies and then the services and then the equipment. Now that's just strictly on police department under the general fund.
So that can be uniforms, that could be tires, so...
Long as it falls under that line item. You said office supplies, there's a line item for office.
Okay, so...
You said equipment, there's a line item for equipment.
It's not easy for somebody, I don't know, maybe it is easy for Peter. But if he's running a budget monthly and he needs to know what he has monthly to spend, my work, I have budget. I have 200 plumbing and 200 ACs. Even though I don't use it, I'm going to order 200 dollars of AC parts because June's coming next month and I only have 150, so I'm going to get my 200 and we stay within so we don't exceed the budget. I think it's very hard for the chief of police to know what he can spend and what he can't spend and what money goes to what? If it goes to new tires, if it goes to a, a training, or we need a new camera for the, for the, the guys and the girls, or we need a camera for the thing, or we need a new sticker for our car because it's peeling or...
Did you train the, the chief of police as well as all the...
We've done training for administrative staff.
But that's not, that's not the training.
Training to, to...
I understand, mayor. Mayor, but, uh, what I'm saying, it says 98,000 dollars in one item, you know, and it's a broad of stuff. What it's easier for anybody, whether they get training or has, just to itemize it. Because then if they don't know how much they can spend, I'm not going to let Peter go and spend, and I'm just saying, if I was the city manager, I'm not going to let Peter go spend 25,000 dollars on cameras when my guys need new uniforms, but we only have 30,000, so he's going to go spend 25,000 on cameras because we told him he had 30,000 to spend.
But that's where your, your finance officer and city manager, who understands the, the layout, is much better than a layperson to teach the, the chief of police.
No, no, I, I totally understand that. But, no, no, it's not that. But they, he has to have a guideline. He has to have light items. He can't come to the city manager every week and say, how much money I got?
No, but Josie, how, what were you doing in the past?
Um, they have their budget available to them, so they're able to identify and they can do the purchase orders and we approve and then go over.
Yes, but they're just doing random purchase orders hoping they get approved. That's not what we want to do. We want to say...
Are you doing random purchase orders, purchases?
What we'll do is, uh, when we, when we, when we get a purchase order, it tells us, uh, where, where we, where we're at.
Right. So what else are you asking? I'm not sure.
The thing is, the, the thing, I have, I could, the thing is that like, the way the budget is here compared to the budgets that we deal with, they're not the same.
They have to be the same.
But we know where we can spend our money at because everything is broken down under...
If you have, if you have, if you have a, the good in the back end to this is you have a chart of accounts and she, Josie has, whenever, the finance directors, everybody should have a chart of accounts. Basically tells you, this is how we're going to identify whatever purchase you're going to make. So if you want, you want to get it down to pencils, okay, well, we can identify pencils. We can identify pins. So the idea is to put it in an office supply. But you're right on some of these things where it says capital. What does that mean?
Yeah.
What does it mean? Does it mean, and so by, by, actually, I think what we said was capital, anything over 5,000 dollars considered capital.
It goes capital expenditure. But my, our budget, this budget that we have right here, if I go pull Peter's, then I go pull municipal court, and I go pull the libraries, it's not going to match. So what I am proposing to...
Layman, elementary terms, so they can understand.
It's not, I'm not, I'm not done, mayor, and I'm not retarded and I'm not saying these employees are done.
No, layman means where they can understand.
But you're saying elementary and it's not, that's not what they need. You know, you're not going to sit here and say that in layman terms.
I don't think it's elementary. I think...
But she said it. But the thing is, it's not what we want. I want this budget to match his budget because I am playing with their food on their table. Because y'all are telling me and he's telling me we're broke. And then I'm trying to fix numbers to give the council and tell them this is what we need for the city to run and their stuff does not match mine.
I think if I may, uh, one of the things that I noticed in the year-to-dates is that what we budgeted for last year has hardly, in some cases, it's been spent. But what I have found is, is like, uh, some departments spend 4% to date, or some departments spent 70%, other departments, most of the departments are under 30, 40%. Now, from, what I'm getting from, uh, some of the department employees is that at times they're told not to spend any more money.
Budget freeze.
Are we freezing the budget? Are we freezing the bu, I mean, I think the, 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 the problem here is that money... monies are not here when we have bigger budget. Monies become available as we get sales tax, as we get taxes, and so forth. And so I, I don't know how the monies were dispersed amongst the departments. And, and so, uh, I think there needs to be a clear process as to each department. What, what, what do they have that's available for spending and so forth?
I think the challenge that you run into in anything, not just this city, but other cities is, is this is if you have to give the finance department a time to close out the project. What I mean by that is, I'll give you an example, the city I worked at before. We had a, we had a quick, reduce spending or anything that come before the council a month or two before the actual fiscal year. And that is by rule. Uh, you just had to do that because you have to give, give the people a chance to close their books and prepare. And Josie's in, she has to prepare for the audit. So it doesn't mean that she, she, you just close spending altogether. That's not what I'm saying. I don't think that's, I, I hope that's not what you're doing for the audit.
Let me draw up a map. I run a budget. I run a very big budget myself. We close monthly. The twenty-fifth of the month, we're closing. Whether I don't collect it or not, we're closing on the twenty-fifth. We don't freeze budgets. I order lots of my products on the twenty-fifth. We re-occur that invoice for the following month that it's gonna be in May's financials. But I have not received the invoice. The, the end of the year is a little different. But we don't need to have a budget freeze throughout the month. What are we freezing? Nothing matches. Your numbers don't match. We're saying we're cutting these positions, we're cutting these positions because we were told that's gonna make it work. Then we look at the numbers, the number is here, here, here. The frustration part, these are people's jobs, these are what makes a city run, and we're getting one story to this story, and the numbers do not match.
Can I, I, I think, uh, now that we have, uh, new management, I think some of the things will probably remain clearer to the departments and so forth. I, I have a question on page sixteen of the general fund, under Parks and Recreation. Streets and roadways, uh, for streets and roadways maintenance under Parks and Recreation. We budgeted eighteen thousand five hundred, however, only seven hundred ninety-six dollars have been spent to date. That's only four percent of the budget. Uh, and, but we're still asking for eighteen thousand five hundred dollars there. I, I, I don't understand. And, and in the year before, only seven hundred forty-two dollars were spent. That's, that's, that's a good place to cut money.
And that's what we should do.
Because we're not, I mean, it's not being utilized for whatever it's being asked for.
You can reappropriate the, the dollars to the streets. I mean, you said you really want to do, again, I, I can't say that what you have is, oh, we look at every single item, item. But I, I can say that for the most part, we try to balance it to where we're not, we're not, uh, I look at more on the, the total, the total number. And I, yes, I, I did look at the line, but I can tell you that because of the timeframe, I mean, this, the planning process to this has to start again back in...
And, and I understand that, but I, I would feel more comfortable, I, I, I'm not ready to take any of that over in this budget. I need to see ending, ending, uh, report for the last two years as far as what the budget was actually spent. Because I'm, I'm, I'm looking at this and, and I'm thinking, this is probably a pattern where we have budgeted a lot of money and hardly anything gets spent. But, you know, when we go out in the community and, and the residents ask us, "Why is this not getting done? Why is this not getting done?" You know, we, we, we're believing there's money in the budget to get it done, but it's not getting done. So I think one of the things to do is, is prioritize or rethink on what we're gonna be doing. Last time I, I had asked that, that we rethink and put more money into, into the cleanup of the town, into streets, uh, and, and chemicals, and all kinds of things that are needed to, to, to really do something with this town, make, make some changes, okay? Changes that the community's asking for. And so when I look at, at this budget and I, and I look at numbers like that, it's, it's, it's concerning to me because, uh, we, we should be spending this money. And, and how, why, why do we not spend this money? That's, that's like a question I have. I, I have another question.
Let her answer your, your first one.
For the streets and roadways, and I don't think, why don't you see their predict? Um, that was a project that he had been wanting to do for quite some time, to do the path around the sports complex, um, to do some sort of, in the local county to go ahead and relay that, that walking trail, um, and, um, something that you're up here.
And I realize that this is, this was the second year that was budgeted for, and this is the first time I'm hearing that. So one of the things we really need to do is expect to work on budget worksheets with departments early on and have them, uh, relate to us how they want to, uh, what projects they want to work on and so forth. Because that's, that's the only way to plan. Right now, we're just kind of proving money so that just in case we have to spend some money. Um, I have a question on the grant expenses on the CDVG grant on page three of, uh, CDVG. There's nothing of, uh, budgeted for that, however. Well, if it's still a grant, I mean, we, we should have...
I voted for it, right?
Right, and, and, and there's an expenditure on, uh, under utilities for fifty-five thousand under CDVG grant match. It, it does not make sense. So there's nothing budgeted for.
Um, we did approve to go ahead and, uh, go out for our state or grant rider for nineteen twenty for the CDVG grant. We do have a matching utilities fund, they didn't split them, two seventy-five, two hundred and seventy-five thousand is what we budgeted to go ahead and collect and spend out, so that would be...
So there should be some figures there on page three of that. Um, I also have questions on... Okay, is, is on page, uh, one of utilities, the garbage department, is, is that proposed budget amount going to be affected by the fact that, uh, the transfer station will now be available to the public? And, and does that include any roll-offs that we may get for the cleanups that we really want to do this time?
It, it won't be, as far as you're talking expense, per, on the revenue side of page, you said one?
It's page one of the utilities question.
Under the financial summary, uh, it's... Yeah, we, we are proposing, and the other thing is, is to do a rate study. And part of the rate study is gonna reflect, again, the top part is, is trying to determine whether we have increased garbage people are utilizing the transfer stations. So as far as projecting how much people are gonna utilize it, no, that's not in here. But the rate study, um, will help us as far as determining what we need to be charging customers for water, sewer, and trash. So we need, we need to, we need to have a rate study done. Again, the last rate study, I believe, was done in two thousand twelve. Um, but I would encourage the council as we move forward, that's something that we really need to do, preferably towards, uh, the beginning of this year.
And I understand that, but if, if we're gonna, well, I don't know if we are or not, but I would, I have suggested that we do the cleanups like, like we have talked about. And we're gonna get roll-offs. I don't know that the public is gonna provide those for free.
No, I'm sure they'll charge, and that's what I'm saying is...
It has to be reflected in the budget.
As, as far as the actual cost, I can't tell you because again, I don't know, one, the number, the program itself, we want to have that one every month. The cost determined that, I, I, it would be kind of hard for me. But what I'm getting at is I can go back and do the trash, uh, budget number, when we do a program like that, it would be kind of hard to say, yeah, let's go ahead and, and, and spend something, knowing, not knowing for sure that's what the council wants to do.
Okay, on the very next page, uh, on the utilities, page two, right about the middle, it says WNS sales penalty. We have budgeted forty thousand dollars for that penalty. I don't know what that is. And, uh, we have spent fifty thousand seven hundred one dollars. And there's another one right down the road.
It's on the revenue side, is that what you're looking at?
Yes, uh, I'm, I'm on utilities fund, under revenues, page two.
You collected more on that than...
We collected more, okay. And, and what is that?
This is your water, your cell penalty, your disconnect. So we need to do eighty-five percent, uh, penalty fee. So once we disconnect, then they have...
So it's a penalty fee for disconnect, okay? And, and that's same thing for the gas sales?
Yes.
Okay, now, I have a question, uh, munigas. Was that ever resolved with munigas where we have to do upfront payment?
We are still conducting the prepayment we have in common with them to go ahead and see what our next step is.
How much is the prema, prepayment?
Um, it varies from month to month, um, see...
Is it budgeted?
It's budgeted, it depends.
Where, where is it?
Um, in your gas, gas goal.
So I, I, I thought we were pretty close to getting that resolved.
We are. We just need to contact them to go ahead and see if it's...
So...
And then we'll come back to confirm, identify exactly what the decision was and where.
And where is it reflected in the budget?
Um, it's gonna be under your gas. Uh, page thirteen, cost of gas goal, for ninety-seven.
All right. Yeah, I have another question. I'm just gonna finish my questions.
Take one.
Uh, page six, utilities fund, uh, under services, other services, we budgeted twenty-six thousand seven hundred, and, uh, we have spent six hundred ninety-four dollars.
Uh, this is our Tiger Technologies, it's split in between the general fund and utilities fund. Um, something that we have to reconcile, majority of it's been related out of the general fund.
Okay, if you, what did you say, Tiger Technologies?
Tiger Technologies, it's our accounting, financial, um, all of the work orders, our full software that we use. Yes, it's our info.
It's your software system?
It's our software.
Okay, so...
So there's an annual fee that we go in and pay, um, and then we pay maintenance for each roll-off.
So, so this is gonna be paid out at the end of the year? Is that what that looks like?
Yes, we should be receiving that in the...
Okay. And, uh... Okay, do we have any money budgeted other than the, uh, CDVD, CDVG grant match for any kind of sewer line repairs? Since we have a lot of clay pipes still.
We're gonna have to, those projects I would propose you do under some cycle. And there's no, here, from my knowledge, maybe there is a CIP program. There is no, that I'm aware of, capital improvement program. We, we definitely would need to work on this fiscal year. Capital improvement, capital improvement program basically gives you an outline of the projects that you want to complete maybe in a five-year period. And I'm talking significant, you know, multi-million dollar projects. But those are things that, as we, you know, we're talking about is just general maintenance. When you put under, under, when we're talking significant, you know, projects and that you, you want to put under a CIP plan, uh, that you know that the council is gonna carry out. Normally the councils will do, they'll, they'll actually adopt a capital improvement plan and say, "This is what we're gonna do for the next five years." And they, you adjust your rates and your structures and everything else based on whatever plan that you plan.
On page seven of your utilities, under wastewater treatment plan, under maintenance, there is a sewer line repairs, the concrete, thousand five hundred. And then on the following page for capital, uh, sewer line extension, ten thousand, and there's a CIP grant match as well, it's right there. So that's what we allot every year to go ahead and...
Yeah, and I realize that, and it's, 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 it's a small change for everything that happens, uh, breaks and et cetera, et cetera. But, you know, so, uh, in order of us, for us to look into fixing some things, we would have to probably look at a grant rider writing grants or something.
It's, it's a combination of, of things. You could, you could hire a grant rider, but the question becomes is, you hire the grant rider, you're paying thirty, forty, fifty thousand dollars a year with benefits, with no assurances you're gonna receive any grants. So, so you run the risk of, of, of doing that. But again, that's the council's choice if this is what... And a lot of these, a lot of these grants are, are competitive grants, meaning you have to compete with cities like San Antonio, where these other, these other grants that we're applying for, CDVG, and I hate to use the word low-hanging fruit, but I'll use it. And those are grants and things that we could, if we qualify, we can meet. But if you're, you're gonna try to compete with other communities, then that's what you, that's what you have to continue. Because do you hire somebody with the understanding that you may not receive the grants that you, that you want to seek?
But what about services, like contracted services?
Yes, I believe, I believe, uh, there's a, Grant Works does that. But we have to, again, on the other hand, identify projects that we want, that we want to undertake. And what I mean by that is it could be a water and sewer project, it could be a parks project, but identify.
That's part of the CDVG project that we try and get every year. So, um, uh, the CDVG, we're providing two hundred and seventy-five thousand in repair for infrastructure, and we provide fifty-five thousand. So each year we try and get that, go ahead and, um, tackle all those improvements.
Okay, on page ten of utilities, under debt service. Uh, I believe that, uh, the certificates of obligation for twenty-sixteen principal and interest were being paid out of the surcharge, right, amount. I, I don't recall as, uh, ever discussing or approving the nineteen ninety-eight revenue bond to pay that payment out of there. How much is owed on that nineteen ninety-eight?
Um...
I think you're pretty much extinguished, and you're pretty much, you're pretty close to being done. Uh, I think, I must think you're fifty. I have to look, but it wasn't, it, it drummed me up, I missed it.
Are we pretty much exhausting it?
Yes, sir, I can, we can go and verify that, but I think you're pretty close to paying that, so... I don't have the schedule.
I'll have the schedule on me, but I, oh, yeah, yeah, here.
Get somewhere. That's twenty sixteen. I have a comment or a question on the utilities, page six. On other services, y'all have current budget twenty-six thousand seven hundred. Why was that budget so high and I've only used six hundred ninety-four dollars?
I understand.
You just asked that question.
Um, it's our Tiger Technologies software, our accounting, financial, work orders, info, um, everything in one. We should be getting that in the...
Well, that's the one y'all are gonna pay out after it zeros out? Okay.
Whatever happened to the, uh, fire fund? The forty-one thousand for the fire department?
The forty-one thousand, that's that fire reserve, um...
Did they ever give it back to you?
No, we still have it. It is your fund number twenty-fourth, the fire reserve. There's a budget and they, they utilize it. I think the last thing they bought was bunker here. And they use it for their meetings and travel monthly, um, and they utilize for shirts or, you know, traveling and stuff like that. So we still have it in a separate fund and they utilize it.
And then on the, uh, the fifty-nine, was the forfeiture fund of the police department? Was that ever established?
Those are separate accounts, fund thirty.
Was that ever established?
Did y'all get a separate account?
We're, we're still waiting to get the, the new signature cards from the bank to open up the separate bank.
How long does that take? We talked about it like two months ago.
I haven't made my way to the bank yet, so we should have it soon.
We're trying, chief.
Uh, uh, another question on utilities, page ten, under capital projects. Meter replacement, is that the, but we pay back the principal on meters?
Where do I, I'm sorry?
Page ten, under utilities, water production and collection, part, expenditure. And your capital projects, we budgeted sixty-eight. The year-to-date is thirty-three thousand and we're proposing ninety-eight. What is, what is the difference?
Those are, um...
What's the difference there?
So, within the years as we progress, our rate moves... So within the years as we progress, our rate moves higher. Our principal and interest, those are our meter leases. Um, the improvement is going to be done with, I'm not sure. At the wastewater and steam with meters, yeah, meters. Um, it is a, the debt that we have and we are still progressing and council. So we're hoping once the financial.
What you have right now with the debt structure, with a lot of this is as you, as you continue, you're making your payments. Like for instance, right now with the two thousand twelve bonds, you're going to repeat what you're paying per year. I think right now your debt service on that is over seven hundred, you said eight hundred thousand dollars. I don't, I don't know for sure, but anyway, the idea is, is you, they start out small and as you progress, you pay it out in fifteen years. And in year seven or eight, you're talking pretty significant payments. And so your INS rate, if you're looking at that, that's going to, it's going to increase depending on the debts, you know, whatever it is you owe for that year. So next year, if it stays the same amount, yes, it decreases, hopefully the INS rate will also, uh, decrease. But, but we're not going to see that decrease all the next two, three years at least. Your, your debt service payments are pretty significant for two thousand twelve. And you'll start seeing increases also in two thousand sixteen issues.
You have a question, hold on a second.
I have a comment. Here's my eleventh budget I go through. Eleven. Sixth is mayor, fourth is council, and now five. This budget is one of the worst budgets I've seen. And I'm not saying that all the other budgets were perfect, but. I mean, we spent two and a half hours on a third workshop and we didn't get nothing accomplished. I bet you were to take a vote right now, we'll table it. Because we're not ready to vote. But I can say that's just my opinion.
Well, I'd like to say in, in defense of the city management, I think a lot of thought has been placed on this budget. I mean, it's, it's hard to come in and just say, we want all of this done. And, and be able to procure monies for everything, especially when you don't have a handle on, on the finances and how things occurred. And, uh, you know, some of the things that we thought were, uh, happening one way didn't necessarily happen that way. For instance, the, uh, the, uh, payment of the twenty-two, uh, bond was supposedly paid out of sales tax. Well, it wasn't sales tax, uh, it was supposed to be paid out of general fund and so forth. So there's a lot of factors, yes. And, you know, I, I don't agree with you on that because I, I think the management is trying their best to get us what we need to have. Uh, we do need a little bit more time to look at things and, and, uh, and so forth. I do agree with you there, but I, I, I do want to commend you for, for doing what you've done so far. In a, in a time that you have had. And, and visiting with the departments and so forth, that, that takes a lot of work, it takes a lot of time. To understand things particularly, it's, it's not going to happen at this stage.
I don't mind, I can honestly say, you know, I've been here three weeks and I, I know there's challenges. Believe me, I, I can, I can see it, but there's not, I don't have to have, I mean, folks tell me, I know that they, I've heard it from all the council members, I know there's challenges. And not every, every budget meeting is every council member, every person going to be satisfied with what we proposed. And I recognize that, I've, I've been doing this work also for, for quite a few years, so I recognize that as well. But the planning process for this, in my opinion, uh, should have started months ago. And I'm talking months ago, I'm talking.
I, I said that, sir.
And, and so with that, I mean, and I, I was.
Thank you.
It's not, this, this budget that I'm giving you, I can honestly tell you, um, it's not what I would have done had I had the time.
Thank you.
Uh, but in saying that, we start, we start budget processes and we, we will start in, in May. And we will have, we will have the departments available for everybody.
Thank you.
This coming year, okay, if the council decides to keep me or not, that's the council's choice. But my point is, is that we will start having these meetings earlier. So whenever we're going through this next year, we're not having to, um, approve budgets, approve tax rates, approve everything at one time. That's, that's unfair for, for everybody involved, including, including the staff and particularly the city council. Is, is to not, not give you enough time to, to absorb information and, and get it to where you.
I would like to make a comment though. I mean, I know, I worked with the budget last year here. And this is, actually, this is the first time that it's been explanatory. Because that last year, we were just giving it to us and just, you know, it wasn't broken down or anything like that. I mean, I'm just saying because this is what I would do.
And I want to make a comment on the, on this. This is my seventh budget and I'm very upset, you know, we spent all these hours. You know, and I know you're new to this, but these numbers got to get right. I know, I know from your resume and why I voted to hire you and why I voted you for my top two city managers. Is because I know you'll do the job. And I know this ain't your budget. And I know this is not your numbers. But we wasted two and a half hours here. All the work that I did on this budget goes down the drain because the numbers do not match what these directors have. You cannot give me a budget and it doesn't match the department head's budgets. And you cannot tell me to look at each department and give a wish list. We're not going to get what we all want. That's very clear. And I'm not throwing a hissy fit because I'm not getting my way. I'm throwing a hissy fit because my numbers don't match. And everything has moved to the general fund and to this and that, and that's it. And that's my opinion, mayor.
I was asking.
Okay.
Not you.
So, oh, you don't want me to interrupt, please don't interrupt when I'm talking.
Joseph.
So my thing is this. We're going to spend another two and a half hours on a budget. I want these numbers matching the year-to-date, I want it to match. I want to know, you know, usually you go through a budget, what I've done, this is my seventh budget. We used to go through budgets through each line. Six thousand, we budgeted, we only spent two thousand, we're knocking it to five. We go through each line and they take four, five hour budget, but we would get it done in one day. And we started in May. Sometimes we started in April, just to get it together, then there's new council members come in May, then we revisit it. But we start early, this is late.
With department heads.
With the department heads.
And that, that's part of the, the discussion that needs to be happened as far as, I mean, a council knows, not every department, you can't get everything that the department has to want and a council.
And that is, that, that is fine, and we're not going to get everything we want. We're going to give what, people come to us. And we're here to vocalize their wants. We're here to vocalize the people of Pierceville wants. And most importantly, to protect the tax dollar, the taxpayers' dollar. And not give you authority to spend sixty thousand dollars. And, and the financial, um, director not to give us an explanation on what we spent. That's not what we're here for. And that, that's my comment.
I'd like to say that I, I don't think we've wasted our time. I think it's important to understand things. I think it's important to ask questions. I think it's important that the directors, public understands how we proceed with a budget. You know, and, and some of this, some of these items, some of these numbers, uh, you know, we just have to tweak here or there, whatever, needs to be done with this. But I do not think we've wasted our time, it's part of the process. One of the things that I would like to see is your, your ending, uh, balances.
Yes, sir.
Uh, for the last two years, because that's going to help determine some things in terms of how much we should really allow for. Some cases are here that maybe a department, uh, may not have enough money to proceed with what we are asking to be done. And so we need to look at all that, uh, carefully.
And I understand that, but my, like, I'm going to say what, what is bothersome. Is that this is our third budget meeting with the same questions we've been asking over and over. Every meeting, we're learning, all of us are learning. And we're getting knowledge and we're getting up to date. But how many questions did you ask today, Mr. Hernandez? That you still couldn't get an answer that you've asked before? How many questions did Mr. Vareal ask today? And we still yet have not to get an answer? That is my point, is that we can keep asking and asking and asking, and it ain't going to happen. We've had meetings that we have, we had approved and passed by the council and those actions have not been done. That is the frustrating part. We all have families and we're here because we choose to be here and we, we were elected to be here. But I'm not going to sit here to repeat the same question and get no response. Every single meeting, not going to do it.
Well, my questions are, are mainly because I, I, I like to dwell into the numbers a little bit more than.
Yeah, but we're not getting answers and you know we're not getting.
No, I, I think I got several things answered. I, I got several things answered, there's still some things that I'd like to look at.
Well, we hope everybody signs the questionnaires too.
Truthfully.
Also, also on, um, this is, um. Well, we need to, is this, if everyone had the comments, if not, we can close the budget workshop. So. Any other comments? Because we have to move on, which we probably table this item because we still need to.
And we, we need to close the workshop.
We need to close the workshop first.
Motion to close.
Second. On favor. Okay, moving on to four B. Since there's, there are a lot of work to be done, I mean, adjustments to be made. And suggesting we table this item, so we need to entertain a motion to table.
I'm going to table.
Second.
On that, just the timeline wise.
We have a timeline too, keep it in mind.
The end of September, I mean.
But I think you have to.
No.
Can, can you have a summary of the timeline?
You have to submit it, not, it has to be there by the end of September.
There are timelines that we do have to meet.
We have a thirty-day period to file the proposed to be approved. We file the proposed and then thirty days later you have to approve the, and adopt the budget and taxes.
So we have enough time for another workshop?
You got to have the public. Let me ask you this, can, can, you're saying the proposal, do they still make adjustments after the proposal? Have they done it historically here? So you could file the proposal and make adjustments to the proposed budget if that's, if we can do that this year?
We, we still meet in between the proposals and the approved to make sure we have all the changes.
The motions are ready, they would have to rescind their motion.
Well, uh, I mean, I think we did have, uh.
Table.
Just come back, have a table.
Come back and, and, I mean, it's taking a little longer than usual.
But can we take longer than that? What's the fine, like, because we have everything, everything has to go by the thirty-day proposal. Once we hit the thirty-day proposal, we, we have the public hearing. Then we have the other thirty days that would have to be passed. And there's a date that it has to be completed with, with it.
September thirtieth is your final.
We don't have sixty days. We don't have sixty days and that's what we're asking. We, we need to rescind that motion and put a thirty-day proposal and then go and amend it. We got to get those thirty days out, we ain't got sixty days to the thirtieth.
The date is the twentieth.
And my wish Bobby was here, because we need, we need lawyer advice on this. The city can be in a lot of trouble for this.
Thank you. Again, we can call Bobby, but I think what would happen is you, you'd adopt last year's rate, last year's tax rate, um, in the budget.
The tax rate's the same, right?
Right, so that would be, that's the figure, you'd have to adopt it. But you, I'm, I'm not assuming is you'd have to keep, also keep your same debt service, your same MNO and I, that's right.
Yeah, we're not, so. We ain't got sixty days.
I don't know that for fact, legally, I don't, I would, you're right, it's a Bobby question.
But Bobby was here. These are meetings that he should not miss.
I thi- I think last year we, uh, we didn't adopt a proposed budget until, uh, was it the first, the first week in September? Or the last week in, uh, August?
The proposal or the main one?
We filed the proposal on August fourteenth. And then we made our adjustments to the final approved budget. To the final approved budget. I have here that we adopted in the pre-budget, September seventeenth, but I'm not sure we made it up. The twenty-ninth, we ended up surpassing it. But as long as we have thirty days in between the.
Thirty days.
So what would it be in sixty days?
Because it's thirty plus thirty. You have to file one on thirty, for, for thirty days, then you file the actual one for thirty days. That's sixty days.
The twentieth.
You have to file your proposal and then thirty days is you file your adopted budget and you have to have it done by September thirtieth.
And you also have to have a hearing to the public and it has to be published for so many weeks.
Two weeks.
We got to know these things, these, these things, we, we sit here, we take a train, so we got to know these things.
So I'm asking you this, there's a twentieth. So if we met again Friday, which we have Thursday, we have time to meet Friday, right?
Yes.
Okay.
We have to post, we have to post seventy-two hours.
Post for seventy-two hours.
You have to post today.
You would have to post like right now and you would not be able to meet until eight fifty-six.
And you have twenty-four hours, yes, the chance to post before five P M.
It's seventy-two hours.
Yeah.
You'd be able to have it on Monday if you were to post Thursday, or you can do Tuesday on the twenty-seventh.
On Tuesday on the twenty-seventh, that's giving us enough time though.
And try to file it, you could do twenty-seven and the twenty-eighth.
And we need to put that out in the paper.
It's Monday.
For the public hearing. We got the public ready to come in and talk about this.
We can do it.
We're saying we only have a public hearing if you raise the tax rate.
Yes, but, only, we're staying, staying the same, but the other numbers are changeable. You still have to have it, you still have to have it.
You have, you don't, you have it only to increase your MNO, MNO rate. So I think you're fine, I think you have to have a hearing for the, for the actual budget.
Yes.
There's a public hearing for a budget. Trying to recall all the, all the dates, but yes, there's, there's at least one public hearing for the budget. And maybe that has to occur between the time that you propose it and the time you actually adopt it, actually going in between those dates.
And if nobody comes, nobody comes, but they got to be, we got to, we got to be here in a meeting.
That would give you two weeks of.
You guys can even meet on Tuesday, six, and recess into the. Do you want to get these up for tomorrow?
Yes, okay.
Can you, can you meet at the same six thirty?
You can do it Monday.
You guys want to, uh, what, thirty days?
Thirty days, we got to send the motion.
Yeah, we can go ahead and, you can, you guys want to.
It's a little Monday work.
Can we take consensus on how many people will work for Monday?
Can be here.
Yeah. You?
Probably get a worker.
Because don't you need to school, is that only for the adopted that you have?
This is just for the proposal.
So it's the adopted that you have.
But you can have it before.
We can, we can meet Monday recess and then come back Tuesday. Is that what you were saying?
That's what I'm saying, if you guys want to post for Monday and you guys still need more time, you can recess for twenty-four hours.
I'm saying, okay, you can recess.
So, yeah, you just can't say that unless we're going to.
Monday.
Yeah, on Monday, you're going to say, instead of a journey, recess, uh, till tomorrow, twenty-seventh, then six thirty, yeah.
So what time on Monday?
Six thirty.
Six thirty.
Six, six, six.
Motion is made to save it. Is there a second?
No, we're going to.
On favor. Motion carries. Motion to adjourn please.
Motion. So then we're going to recess for Tuesday at what time?
No, Monday, Monday. Two, the Monday we recess for Tuesday.
Okay.